Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem. Stothard is absent yet. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Yes. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our political position.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we work through today's agenda, I ask that we all consider patience, understanding, and acceptance of each other's thoughts and positions. Would you remember that our intent and purpose is to do what is best for the city of Omaha and our fellow citizens? Amen.
City Clerk certifies publication on daily record on April 5th. Notice for your pre-council on regular city council meeting, April 9th, 2013. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the letter say chambers. Councilmember Stothard has entered the chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Ordinance on final reading, item number five, an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease purchase agreement between the City of Omaha Public Facilities Corporation and the City of Omaha for the lease purchase of and financing of equipment and improvements to certain real estate comprising of the golf project. A is an amendment of the whole.
The public hearing was held on March 26, 2013. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. Resolutions, preliminary plats, plats and subdivision agreements. Item number six is resolution of the preliminary plat entitled McDonald's Edition, second edition, located at 7717 Dodge Street along attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation of final plat is hereby authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Will there be approval?
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number seven, resolution of the preliminary plat entitled Buckey's Landmark Plaza Edition, located northeast 138th and Q Street along attached conditions is hereby accepted. Preparation of final plat is hereby authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven begins now. Are there any proponents?
Matthew Manning, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray. Yes. Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item number eight, resolution of the preliminary plat entitled Popleton Park Replat One, located at 360 North Saddle Creek Road along attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation of final plat subdivision is hereby authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road, carrying on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Trish Rothe from Kimmy Horn Engineers, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have one question either for the applicant or for maybe planning. This is just preliminary plat, which is fine, and this is the renovation of a long vacant property along Saddle Creek, so it's good to see things happening here. But I was interested, when will we see the elevations and landscaping plans and things of that nature?
And Ms. Rothe might be able to attest this as well, but it's my understanding we submitted those to the planning department in connection with the applications that, because we've already been through planning board on the rezoning and preliminary plat, is that right?
Rick Cunningham, Planning Department. Yes, they have already submitted those, and I think you will be pleased with the improvement along Saddle Creek because of this development and another one further to the south. There's a new restaurant going in there, and we are making it comply with ACI, urban design.
And I have a copy of the elevations with me if you want to speak on them now.
Okay. Yeah, or you can just give them the clerk and I'll grab them then.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray. Yes. Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. We'll take items nine through 11 as one case. Nine is resolution, the preliminary plat entitled North Omaha Airport Acres Replat Two, located at 7155 Bennington Road along attached conditions is hereby accepted. The preparation of final plat is hereby authorized, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Ten is resolution that the replat transmitter herewith entitled North Omaha Airport Acres Replat Two is hereby approved, A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Eleven is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers nine, ten, and eleven begin now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mark Westergaard with the NA Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street. This is a two-lot subdivision just on the south side of Bennington Road out by the North Omaha Airport, here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Will there be approval?
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nine through 11 are adopted, seven to zero.
Is that approved, eight, no, no?
Eight, no. Pursuant to State Council Rule 70, agenda items number 12 through 13 should be laid over for two weeks. Special use permit broadcast tower, item number 14, resolution, special use permit application for a, to allow a broadcast tower with a waiver to allow a 150-foot tall tower in a general commercial district for the property located at 3509 Center Street is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is petitions in opposition, and C is communications in opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number 14 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Sam Mandolfo, 2611 South 117th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Let me give you a little bit of background on this particular location. This has been a process, and when I say a process, we originally started in January of 2010, so it's been just a little over two years now in terms of working on this particular location. We originally started as a modification for AT&amp;T. They have an existing tower at the center mall, and the VA hospital across the street has a number of antennas on it, so they wanted to move from the center mall to the VA hospital because the VA hospital was shadowing the Douglas County facility, plus they were having some issues getting into the VA hospital as well with their service. So, the original intent was to simply move over there and provide better service for that particular area. However, in negotiating with the VA for two years, and the VA deciding that they were going to remove the hospital and build a new one, we were told by the VA contracting officer that the new hospital will have a glass roof. A glass roof will allow for no co-locations on it. There are currently four people on the VA roof, including one that has already had their lease terminated, they're on a month-to-month basis. The other three, as they come up, are going to be terminated and go month-to-month as well in anticipation of removing the hospital, building a newer facility. That precluded us from going up there. We then negotiated with the VA to try and build a signage on the grounds someplace. They decided that they don't know what they're going to do as of yet. Additionally, because of the fact they're going to be building the new one with the old one there, they didn't want to have any impediments, so they finally said, no, we're not going to do it, we're, there's no possibility for any of the negotiations. So, at that point, then we started looking for an alternative location. When we first started looking, we looked all over, and we happened to come across this. That is the tower that pre-existed at 3509 Center Street. It was there for 20 or 30 years. Our original intent was to go in for an amendment to an existing use and reduce the height of the tower and replace it with a sturdier tower. Well, before that could happen, this fell down. Again, it fell down with, essentially within the property confines, didn't cause any damage outside the property, but at that point then we were relegated to applying for a new tower as opposed to replacing existing tower. I've got a photo simulation. The planning board and the planning department, after thorough review, have recommended a height of 105 feet for a replacement tower there. This is the old one and the new one. We were able, again, through simulations, to show both of them on the site, and I might also add that, again, that other tower was there for, you know, at least 20 or 30 years, so it's not anything that wasn't previously impacting the neighborhood, and in essence, this is going to be 70 feet shorter. We'd originally applied for 150 feet. The planning board, the planning department, recommended approval at 105 feet, so they've reduced our request by approximately 33 percent already. As part of our application and process, we've been laid over, we have extended the shot clock, I'm sure you're all familiar with that, and we have had neighborhood meetings. We've had a couple of neighborhood meetings. We had one on-site, and then we had one at the field club where they invited, I believe, the entire field club and Twin Ridge Neighborhood Association. They sent out about 1,500 emails to their constituents, and we had about 100 people at the meeting. As part of that meeting, Councilman Jerem was there, and we talked to the president of the field club at that time about the possibility of locating there, and what we wound up doing was, we then talked to the field club extensively. They initially indicated that they would be interested in leasing property to us for a cell tower. We went through about a three or four-month process with them, when they finally came back and says, no, we don't want to do it. They told me their management company had told them that they didn't recommend doing that. I don't know the reasons that they decided to after initially having an interest telling us no. At that same time, we also went to the Douglas County Health Facility, and we talked to a gentleman, my name is Jerry Leahy, he's a Douglas County administrator of property. Jerry told us that when they were doing the trail system in there, they ran into a biohazard. Additionally, when they did the earth loop, the ground earth loop for the, and some additional parking lots, they ran into fill. Fill's not an issue necessarily, but the biohazard, in talking with our environmental engineer, the FCC regulates extensively cell tower placements. They have a complete manual for placement. Unless we'd get some sort of a written guarantee from Douglas County that we would have no responsibility, the engineer told me, you don't want to go there, you can't. The other thing he told me was, even with a written guarantee, the EPA could still decide that they want you to clean it up. It's not possible to go at the Douglas County facility. Unfortunately, the entire parcel is tainted because of that biohazard and is not going to be, you know, something that any cell company or any tower company would be in a position to locate at. We've looked up Center Street, we've looked up and down 42nd Street. Center Street falls to the west. Going north or south, it, as soon as you get off-center, it's all residential. Center Street in our particular location is a community commercial. It's properly zoned, it meets the guidelines that the planning department requires. Obviously, they wouldn't recommend approval if it didn't. We have done everything that we can to make sure that we're locating it as inconspicuously as possible. Obviously, 105-foot tower's not going to be inconspicuous. However, it is going to be substantially shorter than what was there before. You know, I'm not quite sure what else we can do. Like I said, there are no other viable alternatives at this point in time. You know, like I said, we've been through the county facility, we've been through the golf course, and actually, the golf course, I'm glad for Mr. Jerem's ability to get us in contact with the president, because they had not returned a phone call previously when we were there to visit with them about the possibility. So, at least we got to talk to him and realize that, no, they're not interested. Like I said, we've been everywhere, there's no place else to go. AT&amp;T, that's the tenant. The tower's actually being built by a company called Central States Tower. It's just a small tower company. This is what they do for their living. They are building it with AT&amp;T and as well as US Cellular, because they've expressed interest in moving, they're on the VA hospital right now. So, we have a letter from them that they would be interested at that point in locating at this particular location. So, you know, the city asks that we provide co-locations. Well, we have a letter of interest from a co-locator already. We have the need. AT&amp;T has approximately 300,000 users in the metropolitan area based on their percentages of the cellphone market. They're the number-two care, number-two cellphone company after Verizon. So, they're trying to provide a service to their customer base, large customer base. A lot of Douglas County residents, not just Omaha residents. The other thing is that you've probably got, within the zip code, I believe there were about 10,000 households in the 68105 zip code, and based on the state and national averages, about 35 percent of those people do not have a home telephone. So, their only access to emergency services is through a cellular network. You know, the demands that are being placed on cellular networks because of Wi-Fi and movies and video and text messaging are expanding substantially every day, every year. What AT&amp;T is trying to do is to provide service without a disruption, to improve service in that area, and to provide service, again, to the hospital in its current configuration and once it's been rebuilt, and to provide service to Douglas County as well without the shadowing that they have now. Originally, like I said, they were going to remove the antennas at the center, but because of the height of this one, they're going to leave that one in place as well. Again, they're spending additional sums so that they can try to provide as best service they can, or at least acceptable service. I mean, you know, it's, the best service would be a 300-foot tower there, that would cover a lot more territory than a 105-footer will. But that's not feasible, so here we are.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Good afternoon.
State your payment address.
Yes, sir. My name is Ian Swang, I live at 3340 Center Street. I'm here today representing my family residence, Field Club, and Hanscom Park neighborhoods, and several local small neighborhood businesses in the area. I wish to voice our dissent to the proposed cell tower at 3509 Center Street. My house turns 100 years old this year. I'm part of the Field Club neighborhood, which was placed on the National Register of Historic Places as the historic district in the year 2000. We have historic home tours every year, we have mature tree-lined streets, we have beautiful old homes that are maintained and period-specific and appropriate. Allowing this tower will undo 100 years of efforts to keep this neighborhood beautiful, charming, and quaint. You cannot make 100-year-old-looking cellphone tower. It will take away from, makes what makes our neighborhood great, and it will be in direct contrast with our historic nature. The tower will affect us financially as well, such an eyesore will have a measurable effect on our property values. I've collected 118 signatures against the tower location from homes and a few small businesses in the immediate area around the property in question. I want to emphasize that these are small businesses, this is not an industrial area. For the most part, they're old brick buildings that are not at odds with the historic nature of the surrounding area. The location of a 10-and-a-half-foot, I'm sorry, 10-and-a-half-story steel tower, associated equipment, and a tall chain-link fence will be unwelcome neighbor to these businesses, lowering property values and making the businesses themselves less desirable to patron. I have signatures from Gin Tile and Sun Barber Shop, The Hair Center, Noah's Bark, Auto Store Sales and Leasing, Richie's Chicken and Hamburger, Collector's Choice. Another business recently rejected the tower as well, as Mr. Mandolfo pointed out, the historic Field Club Country Club founded in 1898, they had the power to reject this eyesore. The Field Club Neighborhood Association does not have that authority. The tower is permanent. The Federal Telecommunication Act of 1996 makes it illegal to challenge a cell tower once it is constructed. Now is the only time that we can be heard and try to fight the tower. I still believe that there is a win-win solution. As Sam said, the main target customer is the VA hospital at 42nd and Center, and there is no opposition to placing the tower at the Douglas County Health Department property. It is a huge property, it doesn't have to be in the one location that Sam's referring to. Also, another huge location is the VA hospital. It's a campus, and I cannot believe they're going to put over half a billion dollars into the hospital and not planning on having wireless service somehow. It's not dependent on that one property. I don't know what could be more important in this decision than the overwhelming majority of local residents and businesses in the area being against the erection of the proposed cellphone tower at 3509 Center Street. Thank you for hearing us. Please vote against the tower. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon, I'm Sue Schlessinger. I own the properties directly across from the proposed site of the cell tower, and I would like you to vote no for three very good reasons. First of which, I'm going to ask if everyone received the attachments that identify the commercial properties along Center Street between 35th and 38th Streets? Do the members receive this attachment that documents the assessed values as well as property taxes? Okay. Do you have any questions with regard to that attachment? Okay. If not, I'll just summarize the three reasons that we are providing you, which we believe substantiate a no with regard to the applicant's request for this permit. The first is which, of which is, it is our understanding that three viable, and the word viable is critical, three viable alternate sites be identified, and this is tied to equal competition. Cell phone tower leases are in perpetuity. The lease of the proposed property will be between $1,000 and $1,200 a month in perpetuity. These leases are granted with automatic renewal extensions. They are generally granted in five-year, 25-year, and 30-year terms. A five-year term is granted with an automatic renewal of five times four, 20 years. At the end of that, it is renewed, not renegotiated, renewed in perpetuity. A 10-year renewal initiates at 10 years with a five by four, which is 20 years, and at the end of 30 years, it automatically renews. What occurs at the time of renewal is the opportunity to renegotiate the revenue, the dollars paid to the landowner, or any other item that has come up, for example, if the cell tower wishes to acquire more land. Making a decision to commit this land in perpetuity is your responsibility, your responsibility to your constituency directly in the neighborhood. One of the things that we need to make sure that you understand is the only way that property transitions is the sale of the automatically renewing lease. The sale of that automatically renewing lease grants eminent domain in perpetuity. A cell tower company has yet to abandon a site. Cell tower companies examine the site for the future. They are not making these investments lightly. Once committed, they are then allowed to lease their tower, in this case, to two additional carriers. So, the first and foremost reason that we would like you to vote no, the second reason, I should say, is this represents a very negative, long-term commitment of that property. The first reason was that we don't believe the word viable alternative, three viable alternative sites, has adequately been explored. Two or three sites have been found, all of which were not viable. So, we'd like you to consider that as a vote no. There are viable sites. And the third reason is the direct negative economic impact to three important entities, the City of Omaha, Douglas County, and the Omaha Public Schools. Those are the direct recipients of property and personal property taxes. Recapping a few examples, on the same street, Eagle Foods' appraised value is now $429,000. They pay annually $9,000 directly in property taxes. We don't have the numbers that they pay for sales or income tax, which go to our state and are allocated back down to our local areas. Collector's Choice appraised at $343,000, up from $141,000 due to the improvements made by the owners. They pay annually $7,200 in property taxes, we don't know what they pay in sales tax. Valentino's appraised at $247,000. We know that they pay $6,400 in property taxes. We have no idea what they pay in OCC and sales income tax. OCC goes directly to the city. And the Greek Isles, a local restaurant, appraised value $226,000. They're paying $6,000 in property taxes. We don't know what they pay, that is not divulged to someone like me, in terms of OCC tax, direct to the city, and income tax based on their sales. These are four examples of investments by both local and conglomerate-type companies, like a Valentino, a little conglomerate, who are paying significant dollars directly into the city, the county, and the Omaha Public School System. Property taxes are between 58 and 60 percent used to fund the Omaha Public School Systems. The current property at 3509 Center Street is appraised at $20,000. The owner pays $424 in property tax. That will remain the same in perpetuity. That will remain the same in perpetuity. If there is any personal property and that personal property disclosed appropriately to the state, real property tax will flow to the state, and that real property will be depreciated at the value assessed. If they disclose that and are subpoenaed to disclose it to the state, otherwise they can report whatever they want for personal property tax. Those are three pretty powerful reasons to vote no. I compel the City Council, please, consider, number one, three viable sites were not identified. Secondly, if granted, the lease is in perpetuity, in perpetuity. And thirdly, along with perpetual loss is loss of income. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents?
My name's Tim Fries. I live at 1916 South 35th Street. My house is located directly to the south of where the proposed cell tower would be built. You can see from right there, the red is where it would be. My house is directly to the south of it. About five years ago, a tree from this property fell on my house. It resulted in over $100,000 with the damage. My family was displaced for nine months while the house was rebuilt. The owner did take care of two other large cottonwood trees that were there at the time. And then, in addition to this happening, the tower falling, the old radio tower falling a couple of years ago, makes me concerned about what could happen if one of these, if a cell tower fell over. I know that it's probably, does not happen very often, but there's plenty of examples on the website of cell towers falling because of storms. The storm that blew the tree on my house was over, sorry, was over with straight-line winds of 80 to 90 miles an hour. I've asked about, you know, what can the tower that will be here, what is it built to withstand? Winds, ice, they'll fall over because of ice, poor construction, some of them fall over just because of fires. They catch on fire and will fall over. This tower would be located about 75 feet from my house, and it's 105 feet tall. It's also 18 feet above where my house is. This is damage from the inside of my house when the tree fell on it. That's the bed that I sleep in every night. Not anymore, but that's the damage that can happen because of it. And so, part of what the city has enacted is a 210-foot buffer between residential properties and cell towers, single-family residential. And part of this, part of the reason for that is because of this. The other concern I have is the existing maintenance on the property. This is what the south side that backs up to my house looks like right now, or I'm sorry, looked like in February. These are more pictures of it that are about a month and a half later. There's lots of concrete debris, stumps, weeds. That's the east side. I have concerns about, the representative from the company stated that this area would be landscaped, but there's nothing in the requirements from the city saying that this area needs to be landscaped or there'd be retaining walls put in. So I have some, I have a concern as to what's going to happen with this. I mean, this property right now is in violation of the city code in regards to debris and And so I have concern on the ongoing maintenance. There's also, the city is requiring that there's an evergreen hedge to be planted around it. That evergreen hedge, I believe, would be outside of the state, the area that's leased by Central State, so who's required for maintaining that? If this is any indication of the current state of the maintenance, I have concern on how that would be maintained. I again mentioned earlier the 210-foot buffer. Part of that is to buffer from potential falling objects, but it's also meant as a buffer to the nuisance and visual blight that these things cause. There's security lights that say on, there's generators, chain-link fences. I just have, I got from the city a list, Chris Jerem helped me, of special and conditionally use permits that have been granted since 1988, and there are 111 of those for cell phone towers. 35 of those are adjacent to residential properties. Of those 35, there are only four that violate the 210-foot buffer. And those four all don't pose a fall risk at all to any of the residential properties adjacent to it. This is a small one at 7661 North 30th Street. This is actually the cellphone tower right here. It's probably only 30, 40 feet tall. So it's not even close, not the house you can see over here. It actually just looks like, kind of like a street pole, so it doesn't really interfere with anything. The other two, the cellphone tower is up here, this red dot. The nearest house is here. And then the last one, sorry, there's two more. But this, as you can see, is in a pretty industrial area. There's only one house, cellphone tower is here. All of these are at least 150 feet away from the nearest residence. And the last one, which was on 6316 North 60th Street, this one, there's not an intervening street in the way, but there is lots of vegetation along here that buffers it from the houses. What I think the research that I did shows is that there are no cell towers that have been built, granted special use permits on anything less than an acre. And what that does is allow you flexibility into where you can place the cell tower. This is the first cell tower conditionally used permit that would be granted on a lot such as this, which is less than a third of an acre. My concern is that if you allow this to happen now, there's tons of little areas, little lots within the city where cell tower, cellphone companies could then come and want to build cell towers there. I think this would set a precedent that so far hasn't been set, and I really worry about how that would impact lots of neighborhoods in the future. So my reasons for you voting no against this is the potential fall risk to surrounding my residence, not only that, but also buildings around it. There's also the maintenance issue on the property currently and how that would affect the maintenance ongoing. And thirdly, that this does not follow the 210-foot buffer that the city requires, and even though it is also narrowing that buffer, again, the closest ones I've found were 170, 150 feet. This is about 75 feet from my house, about 70 feet from my lot line. I want to reiterate that I also think, you know, I know that cell towers are part of the city infrastructure, but unlike other utilities, they're built, maintained by private companies that are competing for customers. If it were up to them, there'd be little or no restrictions on where cell towers could be built so they could cite them where they saw fit. The city balances this by creating zoning ordinances to restrict where they can be located. Omaha's zoning ordinance seems a little bit lax compared with other cities that do have fall zones instituted around cell towers. But despite this, companies like Central State's are still pushing what restrictions we do have in place. If the city approves a special use permit, it's setting a precedent that it can't turn back from. It's saying that it values companies unrestricted rights to build cell towers where they see fit over smart growth and citizens' right to live in a safe environment. The evidence gives you multiple reasons why you should not go forward. I, my own personal story, I have a degree in landscape architecture. I lived in Minnesota. I was looking to coming back here, and I wasn't sure about moving back to Omaha. This was about five, six years ago. But when I saw what was going on with Omaha by Design Initiative, I thought, you know, here's a city that's looking at good design and how it can balance its citizens' right to equality of life with the inevitable growth of the city. I still want to believe this, but the cell tower has really kind of shaken my belief in what I think the commitment that this city has shown. The Omaha Master Plan talks about encouraging enhancement and redevelopment of traditional commercial areas and says Omahans need to take pride in the physical attractiveness of their city and work to eliminate visual blight and promote high-quality design. Omaha's urban forum must be carefully designed to eliminate land use conflicts. Approving this tower would not only be a bad idea for the numerous reasons I have stated above, but also runs counter to the Omaha Master Plan, which the City Council invoked to enact. Please vote on the side of smart growth for Omaha and deny the special use permit. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes. I want to take a few issues and go through them, so I thank you for your indulgence in the time. One is, after we heard Mr. Mandoffo talk about that county health center property, you'd think you'd have to have a biohazard suit on to even walk on the property. So I think it's worthy of taking some time to actually refute what was explained to Mr. Mandoffo, which, to be generous to Mr. Mandoffo, may have been a misunderstanding on your part with regard to what is or is not on the county health center campus property in terms of, your words, biohazard. And I've asked the head of Douglas County Public Properties Division to come here today to talk about that because I was concerned enough after learning about your testimony to the planning board, Mr. Mandoffo, that I believe a profound misrepresentation of what was explained to you by Mr. Leahy, and I'll get to you in a minute, was explained to the planning board and then led to their vote. Because what was explained, and it also caught the attention of a few county board members who hosted a meeting to review just what you had said, because you can imagine a county commissioner listening or learning about what you said to think that they could have potentially such contamination or hazardous substances on their campus, that they wouldn't want to know about that and that if indeed it presented a problem, address it. So what actually we learned, Mr. Mandoffo, was when the county partnered with the Papio Missouri River Natural District and the city to build the Field Club Trail and the access trailhead on county property, which would be considerably to the south of the site or one of the sites that Mr. Leahy proposed to you, at that area, they discovered upon excavation, there were some old medical waste that was easily cleaned up, and then the access ramp that I jog over probably four times a week was installed. There's no needles or biohazards or medical waste signs posted. It's all cleaned up, and it was done so with relative ease. So I believe if Mr. Leahy, you could come down here to the mic and confirm was what he was trying to do with you in his meeting with you and his staffer was to explain out of an abundance of caution, hey, when we did this project down there, we discovered this, you may want to do some preliminary due diligence, maybe some soil samples here to determine whether there is or isn't. And Mr. Leahy, thank you for coming down. Would you identify yourself?
Thank you. Jerry Leahy, Douglas County Public Property. We did have two meetings with Mr. Mandoffo in regards to citing, possible citing of a cell tower on the county property. Well, we narrowed it down to, because of various future expansions for the county at the health center property on that campus, we narrowed it down to down on the Boilerhouse Road adjacent to the Field Club Trail. We had discussion about the Field Club Trail, which I, you are correct, I was involved with before, by the way, you now own the Field Club Trail. Before, it was merged with the city Parks Department.
Omaha citizens own the trail.
This is history. This is real history. But in any event, I was involved in it with the NRD, with the City of Omaha Parks Department. And anytime in construction of any type, if you run into bones or, in this case, medical waste, you think may be a possible problem, you halt construction, and you assess the soils, and you clean it up. So that's what we did, but in that conversation, Mr. Mandoffo indicated that that would taint that property for his use, and that was the end of that conversation. The offer for the health center roof was too small for the unit that he wanted to put up there, which would replace, as he stated, the existing at the VA Hospital. So those are the two I was involved in, and that's the discussion that we had.
But there was no willingness on Mr. Mandoffo's part or that of his client, as in many other real estate development transactions, to perform some reasonable due diligence of hiring a soil tester to come in and just drill a little bit where the platform would be proposed.
I couldn't answer why he did not take that option.
And in fact, you've recently, on your Public Properties Division, done some excavation of your own in the very area of the health center property.
We did.
And in that excavation, there were fairly large tractors that were grating the earth there, correct?
Correct.
And in those days, and I think it was a few weeks that they were on site, did any of the workers discover any biohazards?
No.
Okay. So now we have a site that you and your assistant proposed that Mr. Mandoffo, on his own, without any due diligence, tainted as a biohazard. You subsequently learned there, in your own excavation, for another project, there are no biohazards there, and the site's been eliminated. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for coming down here today, Mr. Leahy.
Thank you.
So when we hear the property is tainted because of an abundance of caution that the County Public Properties Division provided to Mr. Mandoffo and his wholesale rejection of that property, where, by the way, there were no height restrictions placed on the size of the tower that could be cited there, whether it be 105 feet, 150 feet, or 300 feet. Mr. Leahy, did you restrict the size at all of Mr. Mandoffo's proposed tower?
No.
Okay. And let the record show, Mr. Leahy answered in the negative. One wonders, why would this company, in the presence and existence of a reasonably alternative nearby location, reject it without any examination or due diligence? And then, learning after the fact, there's been excavation performed, which failed to reveal the presence of any biohazards, why would that be rejected? Now, in fairness to Mr. Mandoffo, and as a credit to him, he did meet with the Field Club representatives, and that board, I'm told, voted no, as he accurately relayed. Whether that's within the purview of the Field Club under the terms of their lease with the Douglas County property, I don't know, but that board rejected that. So that's my primary reason for this recommending to my colleagues here to vote no today, that there's been this pursuit with reasonable That there's been this pursuit with reasonably narrow focus on one site that, as we learned from the testimony of one of the opponents, it would be the first special or conditional use permit granted on such a small property within only 75 feet of an abutting residential property. The others are double to triple that distance or more of the four. Only four times has this council, in the last 30-some years since the city has tracked these special and conditional use permits, has such exceptions been granted. So I want to urge my colleagues, this is a very rare request to have such a sighting, such a type of location, in such close proximity to a residential property. So prior councils obviously have been very meticulous in safeguarding residences from the burdens associated with abutting cell towers that have been proposed. I would like to thank the Planning Department, and I believe it was Mr. Fanslaw's division, for taking the time, the effort, and the resources to put together for the first time a GIS mapping of the city where we can now pull up, the citizens can pull up, the special and conditional use permit cell towers that are located in the city, so you can see them for yourself. Doesn't have all the cell towers, the little ones that maybe didn't have special or conditional use permits, but it's a good start. So some council members have said, so what's the difference? You now know that's the difference. There's also other differences, since the old tower, the old radio tower, I believe there's a ham radio enthusiast that operated out of that tower for years, too. Since then, the Field Club neighborhood has been designated a historic, on a historic national register. So now we not only know has this been exceptionally rare circumstances that we've granted a tower on such proposed site in such close proximity to residential neighborhood, we now have a nationally designated neighborhood on the historic register since the old tower. We also have the reemergence of this small but quaint commercial node in the eastern part of our city. And I think it's important in the master plan of our city that we not do anything incongruent with our efforts to promote urban infill with walkability, sustainability, so that people who can live in close proximity to small businesses can access their services. And so that's different. Difference in time and circumstances from when that old tower was there. We now have this reemergence and the investment by people like Ms. Schlesinger, who, by the way, did not reference, but I think it's worth noting, her connection to the community has been since she grew up in the neighborhood. So she just doesn't, wasn't just raised there, she's now invested there and is active in the commercial quarter, bringing it back. And, you know, humble lady who didn't throw in all the things she's doing to improve the neighborhood. Also, there was investment made in substantial renovation of the commercial buildings just to the west of the proposed tower. And a new, one of the buildings put on at substantial cost, a mural, to try to, again, encourage the regrowth and rebirth of this business node. Mr. Mandolfo talked about national averages and cellphone uses, but there are really no data to support what or what is not the usage for cell phones in this particular neighborhood. And so I hear national averages and I just don't think, with the absence of data for this particular community, it's safe to say one way or another whether the national trend of 30 whatever percent cellphone usage holds true for this particular business node. It's an area that I've walked door-to-door now on two campaigns. And, you know, the residents there strike me as a mix of people. Many elderly people live close by there that are still using landlines. So my personal experience would be probably just the opposite of what your national data would show, but I'm first to concede, and I hope you would be, that without actual survey of that area, I know no more factually than you in terms of the exact percentages of what cellphone usage is in the 35th, 36th, and Center area. So it's for the combination of those reasons, as well as the data put into the record and the arguments we've heard here today, that I do not support this. That I stand with prior councils who have made exceptionally rare waivers to our general rules in terms of protecting abutting residences in such close proximity and protecting neighborhoods from this, that I would make a motion to deny.
Mr. Mandolfo? I failed to give you the opportunity for a brief rebuttal period, and for that I apologize. But if you wish to take a moment now, you have that opportunity.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Let me just mention that Mrs. Schlesinger bought her property. She talks about economic development. She bought her property with that 175-foot tower in place. It didn't seem to affect her decisions to purchase that property. I have yet to see a business go out of business because of an adjacent cell tower, anywhere. Additionally, in terms of a property being tainted, you keep pushing us to the Douglas County site. Unfortunately, in talking with our attorney and the environmental engineer, they both told me the same thing. You can't go there. You can't go there. I apologize. I mean, I realize that's where you would like us to go. It's not possible. There are no viable alternatives. We've explored them all. We've looked up and down the street. Center Street's a high point. The property to the north is residential. The property to the south is industrial, but it drops substantially when you go south. You're not going to be able to reach the target that you need by going south. I resent the implication that I've made misstatements. I don't believe that I have. I've, again, Mr. Leahy confirmed what he had told me. They found medical waste there. You know, the EPA considers that a biohazard. I'm sorry, the federal government rules in this instance, the FCC requires that we do environmental surveys and studies. They're not going to allow us to build there without substantial proof and documentation that there are no biohazards there. I'm not going to ask a private party to assume those risks unnecessarily, in spite of what you might think in terms of that's the best location. The best location is not always the one where people would like to see something happen. The best location is where it's viable. And speaking of that, there's only four locations in Omaha. We did a tower at 5208 Hartman in the back of a church that abuts residential property. The lot line for the church abuts the residential property behind it and to the side. I didn't see that anywhere in your compilation of exceptions to the standards. The other thing is, again, the Planning Department has extensively, in over, you know, approximately a year, in the processing of this particular application, they've reviewed everything any number of times and made a recommendation for approval, as has the Planning Board, even in spite of your letter to the Planning Board, Mr. Jerem, asking them to reconsider and deny their request for their approval when they decided not even to look at it. So it is what it is. It's not pretty. It's needed. It has substantial users out there that will take advantage of it. National averages are national averages. So you're saying, well, I don't believe the national averages for this particular location. That's fine. But they are what they are. The state of Nebraska, the last statistic that I saw from the state Public Service Commission was about 25% of households in Nebraska do not have a home phone. I would submit that for the 40 and under population, it's more like 35% to 40% don't have home phones. So obviously, this area is in transition. There are a number of elderly residents in there. I think as they turn over and the younger residents acquire those homes, I think you're going to see less and less home phones. For whatever it's worth, Quest was losing 10% of their landlines a year. This is about four or five years ago. And I think that trend is continuing. So landlines are going about 10% a year. Cell phones are where people are using their communication money, and that's where they want to be able to use them, is wherever they need the service. This location, they need the service.
Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to see, would our Planning Department be able to address the landscaping and buffering requirements that were mentioned during testimony?
Soon as they finish their conversation back there.
I anticipate getting called on this one anyway. Chad Weaver, City Planning. The landscaping requirement will be tied to the special use permit. Some may or may not be on the lease site itself, but it will be a requirement to be maintained. It'll be up to the landowner and the tower folks to decide who's going to do that. If it doesn't happen, there will be a violation of the use permit and we can bring it back for action, so.
Okay. So there are measures in place to deal with the concerns of ongoing maintenance and the required landscaping for this particular application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Question for our Law Department. We have any history of similar types of applications and outcomes? Could you share with that? What would have been, if any?
Alan Thielen with the Law Department. You're asking about lawsuits?
Okay.
Well, if you're asking about lawsuits in the last 20 years or so, I'm only aware of one lawsuit that involved the site at 52nd and Hamilton that was denied by the City Council. The proponent sued, went into federal court, and they won an order from the court ordering that that tower be given a permit. That was at 52nd and Hamilton.
Okay. And I know we're not supposed to base our decisions on the potential of lawsuits. I think that there was a city attorney that advised us of that back in my other life, and I think it was even brought forward with our current city attorney, that we've heard that before. You've heard the arguments here today. My question is, do the arguments against this tower reach the level of trumping federal regulations?
Well, we can't trump federal regulations. We have to abide by what federal law says, and the federal law, namely the Telecommunications Act, tells us that there has to be substantial evidence on the record in order for us to deny the request. Basically, that's a judgment call for the council to determine whether there's substantial evidence, whether there are good reasons for denying the request here.
All right. Thank you. Just for the record, in my district, I have five cellphone towers. And not one complaint in regards to their operation, lowering of property taxes, the loss of business, or anything like that. I'm quite familiar with the old tower at 35th and Center. Back in my other life, probably drove by that thing, I don't know, a thousand times on patrol and working with the neighborhoods. And since taking over this particular job, have not heard, just for the benefit of my colleagues, any complaints about that old tower. Again, nothing about property taxes being raised, the effect on the loss of employment or anything like that that was mentioned by the opposition. And I know these folks. I consider a couple of them my friends. But I want my colleagues to understand that if we don't reach the level of what the Federal Communications Act, I think we would be obligated to vote in favor of this. So that's the problem that I'm having right now, a little bit of heartburn that I have over this. I understand and I listened. And Sue, I read every single paper that you sent to me. But if we are to follow what federal regulations say and we don't do that, I think the city does run up against some problems. And we have, yeah, we have limited history on where, by the way, Mr. Thielen, did we lose that lawsuit?
Yes.
For the record, Mr. Thielen stated we did lose that lawsuit. Yeah, I'm going to have to think about this one. I'd like to hear any other comments from my colleagues. That'll yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Leahy, if I could have you come down again for a second, please? Now, you'd have to forgive me a little bit because I'm not up to speed with exactly what all is going on out at the Douglas County Hospital site, or the Veterans Hospital site. But you talked about doing some grading, or there was some grading work that was down there.
Oh, it came up in a conversation with Mr. Mandolfo about the campus in general and some of the experiences we had had. If you remember, we moved the Health Department out to the Goodwill Building. When we did that construction out there, County Board voted to do a geothermal system for that building. And when you construct these wellfields, it's pretty common to put them underneath your parking lot. So we had to tear out the old parking lot, anyway. We did not find any medical waste. I think we found a lot of old sewers from the City of Omaha that maybe got dumped there in 1948 or whatever, but that's what we ran into.
So you didn't find a lot of medical?
No. And I think Mr. Jerem had asked that.
Okay. But I guess the question I'm asking is, because you deal a lot with the federal government as well, I think, as it relates to this, maybe, do they have any concern about what you were doing out there or if you could do anything out there?
No. No. The trail and that reporting was due to the grants we received from the state and the city, and it was through NDEQ.
Okay.
We reported that at the time of that construction of the trail.
Okay. So you reported to the Department of Environmental Quality?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mandolfo, can I ask you to?
Before that, could you?
I'm sorry.
Jerry Leahy, Douglas County.
Thank you.
Public Property.
Mr. Mandolfo, do you have any documentation from the EPA that says, that backs up what you say that you can't build on that site?
I simply have the FCC requirements in there, national program guidelines, that a complete environmental analysis of the property. We also do tribal council notification. We notify all the local Indian tribes to ascertain if there are any issues with the Indian tribes in terms of burial grounds or religious or significantly significant sites that they would have. So there's a complete list and guidelines that the FCC requires. And one of those is environmental. And again, in talking with the environmental engineer that does my site And again, in talking with the environmental engineer that does my level-one environmental assessments, and an attorney without a blanket type of guarantee from the county that there'd be no responsibility on our part if anything turned up, the attorney said he didn't think the county would do it. Maybe Mr. Leahy knows if the county would be willing to assume all the liability.
I could probably answer that with a no, but we also have the law department, and it would probably answer that.
And I would think they would answer the same way, that they're not willing to sign a release, that if we run into anything, they'll be responsible for it. To require a private party to assume that liability when there's an alternative that's viable and recommended for approval doesn't make economic sense, especially with the FCC guidelines that they require that all those environmental issues be addressed prior to construction.
Maybe I misunderstood you at some point, but I thought you said that the EPA said that you absolutely could not build on that site.
No.
Is that, they didn't say--
No, I did not say that.
Okay, so they didn't say you couldn't build on that site?
No.
There's no documentation that says you can't build on that site? And all you have is what, the attorney and--
Environmental engineer.
And environmental engineer, did the environmental engineer go out to the site? Did he actually look at the site?
No.
Did they do any testing or boring of the site?
No, we did not.
Okay, so that's their opinion, they don't know it for a fact?
We relied on Mr. Leahy's, you know, our conversation with Mr. Leahy, I don't need to test it to know that there's something there. He's already indicated that there is.
But he didn't indicate that?
Yeah. When they did the trail, they ran into medical waste.
I guess I'm-- Mr. Leahy, either I'm not hearing things well today, or I--
I don't want to get involved in the entire decision on this, but you can have pockets of contamination, but I don't think it taints the entire site. That's my opinion. So, yes, if we had medical waste, which we did, in the construction of that ramp coming down from Woolworth before the trail, it was remediated, soils brought in, soils taken out, tested, properly disposed of, and then new soil brought in. But to taint the rest of the property, that's your engineer's opinion, but it's probably not my opinion.
But it sounds like, it sounds like there are a lot of opinions, and I'm not hearing a lot of factual data here, that there's no, there's nothing written that I'm aware of, is there? I mean, is there anything that says that the soil on that hospital site is tainted?
Mr. Leahy's indication that they found medical waste--
That they found a pocket. He was clear that they found a pocket to the south. That doesn't taint the whole site, though.
For our purposes, unfortunately, it does, because that is a single parcel, and identified as a single parcel. So, because you have a problem in the front yard, does that mean the backyard's okay? It probably is, but the problem in the front yard is still a problem on the entire property. It doesn't, you can't isolate it in terms of saying, well, there's a problem here, we're just going to ignore that and leave it alone, and we'll go in the rest of the property and do what we need to do. It doesn't work, and the FCC is not going to, you know, because of their requirements and their needs for environmental guarantees. Again, it creates tremendous unknown liability, and without some sort of a guarantee from the county, you know, again, Mr. Leahy also indicated that as they were doing the parking lot for the Goodwill Building, they ran into fill there. Well, did they, you know, how much did they go through the fill, and was there something there that they may have missed? I don't know. I'm not sure that he knows, but we know that there's fill there as well. So, could there be, in another area adjacent to that, could there be medical waste there? I don't know. That's the problem. I don't know. It's too big a risk, too big of a financial hazard without a guarantee, and Mr. Leahy already indicated that they're not going to give us a guarantee.
Well, can you do any borings to find out for yourself, though? I mean, because here we're dealing with a lot of supposition, and I don't see a lot of facts on the table, quite frankly. So I guess I'm wondering if you did some borings to find out what was actually on that site or not?
I have a viable site that's been recommended for approval by the planning department and the planning board. In terms of spending additional dollars unnecessarily, I think that's an imposition. I do. You know, if somebody wants to pay for it, sure, let them. I don't, again, if this was the only viable alternative, it would be a different story. However, I have a very viable alternative that has passed planning board and planning department requirements, been recommended for approval by them.
Okay. I, I'm sort of like my colleague to my right here, I'm a little bit of a quandary, because I'm sitting here and everybody's giving me their supposition, but not very many people are giving me many facts, or anything that's written down, or anything that someone has said factually.
I understand what you're saying. The facts are, Mr. Leahy has indicated, they ran into medical waste. They additionally had fill in the area where they were also working. And I'm not sure in terms of, this is the, okay, this is the county site, and--
But what does that do?
I'm not sure. Oh, that's, okay, it's the, again, the county is a single parcel, which I've already stated. Yeah, they're just showing the lot lines and the fact that it's a single parcel. So if you have an issue on one part of it, it affects the entire parcel. You can't segregate that. And according to Mr. Leahy, I don't think the county is going to be willing to provide us with a written guarantee that we have no liability if we do run into something. So why would I want to stir the pot and create an issue for the county unnecessarily? It doesn't make sense, I'm sorry to say. I, you know--
Okay. That, this didn't help much, but anyway, thank you.
And I know, I know where you're trying to go, and there are no guarantees. All I can say is, hey, they told us it's got medical waste, they took care of it, that's a particular location. The FCC requires that we have a clean parcel, the entire parcel, not just where we're going to be. Unless I can get a guarantee that the entire parcel is clean, I can't commit to the liability for someone else to clean it up. You know, if they're willing to provide that written guarantee, hey, great.
Let me ask one final question, because if you've got a parcel that, as large as that parcel is, does the Federal Communications Commission or anybody require that there be a certain amount of feet away, or a certain amount of distance away from where there may be some contamination?
We've had other sites rejected environmentally, and we were a substantial distance, actually farther, we were about, oh, about three or four, a couple thousand feet away on one site, and they rejected it because of environmental. The cell tower, the cell companies and the cell tower companies, because of FCC regulations, they are very stringent, and consequently, it's one of those things that if you don't have to do it, you stay away from it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President. Mr. Thielen, would you come back up?
Alan Thielen with the law department.
Okay. I have a horrible head cold today, and I don't know if I heard, if I heard you say this in your earlier testimony or not, but if, would you mind repeat, are there exceptions to the federal regulations, Telecommunications Act, that are currently in place, that the arguments that the opposition have brought forward today would meet or would fall into those categories? First of all, are there exceptions?
There are no exceptions to the federal law. The federal law is a law that has to be followed by us here.
Okay. So, then let me rephrase my earlier questions. Do the argument, is it, the opinion of the city's law department, are the arguments that are against the tower, do they reach the level of federal law? Yeah, let me rephrase that again. Do the arguments against the tower, do they reach the level of the Federal Communications Act that would allow a city to deny, in your opinion?
At the law department, we try never to tell you how to decide, and so I--
Yeah, I know, I'm going back to what I had said earlier. I understand that.
We can talk about that maybe more in a closed session, which is allowable for instances like this that may lead to litigation. I'm somewhat reluctant to really say whether it is or isn't out in an open hearing, in the event you decide one way, and the law department has to defend that despite what I've said.
Understood, understood.
But I'd be happy to talk that over with you in a closed session.
I understand. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Alan, if you could remain there for a moment. Wouldn't, in this case, wouldn't the parcel of property be limited to the amount of property that would be intended to be used for the cellphone tower itself? I mean, I hear the argument about that we have a huge, your piece of property that Douglas County owns, and that's all interconnected, but that doesn't make sense to me. Can you answer that question?
There are federal laws that deal with hazardous substances on pieces of property, and to a large extent, that law does look at a piece of property in its whole, not just in, as a, not just as part of it. So I guess this maybe reduces more to kind of a commercial or business-type decision. If you have part of a property that has hazardous substances on it, yes, it could be reasonable, it could be commercially reasonable and businesslike to be afraid to develop any other part of that same parcel, because the Federal Hazardous Substances Act, it could potentially look at the entirety of that whole parcel, and not just that small little piece where something was discovered. Does that get at what you were asking about?
Kind of. But conversely, I mean, you could have the adjoining property owner be 10 feet away, and that wouldn't be considered part of the parcel, correct?
Correct. Unless it could be shown that, and if we're talking about hazardous substances--
Yes.
Unless it can be shown that the hazardous substances could, by underground water or something, move from one property to the other. But otherwise, I think you're dealing with just one piece of property.
Thank you. Mr. Mandolfo?
Yes, sir.
Did, the piece of property on Center Street, have you had an environmental impact study?
We have completed our tribal council notification for the Indian tribes, and the engineer that did the survey was also our environmental engineer, and they've completed a phase one on it. So we've, all those things were done prior to our application.
So that, did you just say then that there's no medical waste on that location?
There, to the best of my knowledge, there is no medical waste on our subject property, 3509 Center Street. I might also add that when it was designated a historical site, that 175-foot tower was there at that point in time, so--
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Connecticut was in. I was just curious, is the current property owner in chambers?
He was.
I, we need to-- I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, Mr. Jerem. I did not hear that. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
This is a motion to not adopt the resolution, which is equivalent of denying. Festerson.
A motion to deny his application.
His, it's actually a motion not to adopt the resolution. The resolution would approve his application. So it's equivalent of denying. Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Pass.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Councilmember Jerem, or Garnett.
Yes.
So it's denied?
It's denied on a six-to-one vote. Not a-- City Council Rule 70, Agenda Items Number 15 through 16, two weeks for publication, public hearing. Liquor Item Number 17, Charlie's on the Lake, 4150 South 144th Street, Class C liquor license application, old location. This is an annexation.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 17 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Eve Menard, 13550 Feby Road. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray. Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item Number 18, La Tiana, 4308 L Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old, our new location. You have communications opposing.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Jose Montañez, on behalf of La Tiana, 4308 L Street. We're here to answer your questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Vice President, would the representative and the applicant step back up to the microphone? Could we get her name on to the record?
Yes.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Lourdes Mejia.
Good afternoon, my name is Lourdes Mejia.
La dueña de la tienda.
The owner of the tienda.
Forty-three O A L Street.
Forty-three O A L Street, in Omaha.
Thank you. You're applying for a Class C license for in-sale and outsized, correct?
Sí.
Yes.
For the record, would you explain, so our viewers outside of the chamber here understand why you need an in-and-out, a Class C license?
Para la clarificación, ¿lo están aquí adentro o lo están afuera? Explique por qué quiere la licencia para vender licor adentro y afuera. La idea de vender licor adentro es como, por ejemplo, cuando entra un cliente y me dice que quiere un plato de comida, o un caldo de res, un caldo de camarón, y quiere una cerveza fría, entonces esa es la razón por qué quiero vender adentro.
Okay. The idea of having the Class C licenses, when someone comes in and orders a plate of food, and they want a beer, I want to offer that option to the client.
Is part of the operation, a restaurant, and the other part of the operation is a specialty grocery store?
La operación que tiene ahí es un restauran y es una tienda de--
Is it?
Sí, es mini tienda.
It's a mini store.
Mini store, mhm. Y la razón es porque si alguien entra y me pregunta qué quiere comprar un paquete de cerveza para llevar, es para llevar pero no para tomar en el--
And if someone asks me for a package of beer to take home, they can buy it and take it home. And if someone asks me for a package of beer to take home, they can buy it and take it home.
Are you folks aware that there has been some opposition that has been filed towards this application?
Está usted que ha habido una oposición acerca de esta aplicación. No, we don't.
Okay. Uh, the opposition is in form of concerns by, uh, adjacent property owners in regards to the future development of that L Street corridor.
Sí, dice que tienen preocupación acerca del, el desarrollo de esa, de la calle L, el corredor de la L.
Okay.
But if she understands that now?
Entiende ahorita por qué.
Okay.
Sí, yo entiendo eso de, de lo que usted me está diciendo, la preocupación.
I understand what you're saying, the, your precaution for that.
Pero en lo personal...
In my personal opinion?
Soy una persona estricta conmigo misma.
I'm a strict person with myself.
Cuando digo estricta conmigo misma es que voy a cumplir las reglas.
When I say I'm strict with myself, I mean, I'm gonna abide by the rules.
Por eso fui a las clases de entrenamiento.
That's why I went to the classes to train myself for that.
Donde dicen las reglas.
Where it says the laws.
Que uno debe de cumplir.
That must be abided by.
Y, y lo que uno debe de hacer y no debe de hacer.
And what we must do and not do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Uh, I would say to my colleagues, vote your conscience on this. We know that, uh, we've had similar cases. And, uh, the, uh, the commission, uh, ours is only a recommendation here to the Liquor Control Commission. Where they have, uh, uh, overruled and issued licenses. So I, I would just, based upon the testimony, uh, vote your conscience. That's all that I have. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, does, does your client need a Class C or a Class I? What, what, what do you sell?
Uh, I think it's a C. It's a restaurant and a mini store. It's a comedian's technique mini store. So it's a C, I believe. It's a C because we sell...
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Uh, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. Second. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
It's been adopted, uh, six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Number 19, uh, the Knowles Golf Course, 11630 Sailor Street, Class I liquor license, new application, O-location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item Number 20, Walmart, uh, Number 3173 at 5051 L Street, Packaged Liquor License, New Application, New Location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific. Appearing here with Adam Ebert, who's in the back. If you have any questions. This is a new Walmart market, uh, 40,000 square feet facility, but probably 100 jobs and $29,000 gross sales. So should be good condition to the neighborhood. We're here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted six, zero, one passing. Item Number 21, Sheraton Omaha Hotel, 655 North 108th Street. Request permission to appoint, uh, Edwin Stevens, Jr., manager.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 21 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Frank Mahulka, Woods and Aiken, 10250 Regency Circle, Omaha, 68114. Appearing on behalf of LM Omaha Inc. We have with me today, Mr. Ed Stevens, the hotel manager, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item Number 22, Aldi's at 3433 North 90th Street. Request permission to appoint Lisa Meyerhoff, manager.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 22 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, I'm Kimberly Johnson, the district manager of the location on 90th and Maple. Um, and this here is Lisa, the board manager.
Hi. I'm Lisa Meyerhoff. That's it?
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Ryan Johnson, 664, or 6440 Cedar Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68106.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item Number 23, Resolution, that Resolution Number 327 adopted on March 12, 2013, recommending that the NLC grant a liquor license, uh, at 3034 South 20th Street is hereby amended to include approval of the corrected licensed area measured as requested by the commission.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 23 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett? Mr. Clerk, this was a correction on the measurements of the licensed area. Is that my understanding?
Uh, Mr. Brown, City Clerk, that is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Consent Agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed as otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order. And we're, for the ordinances, we're going to remove Agenda Item Number 33.
The public hearings on Agenda Items Numbers 24 through 32 and 34 and 35 were held on March 26, 2013. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all, uh, they're all passed, seven to zero. Now, Item 33 is an ordinance to amend certain portions of the special levy ordinances loving assessments for weeds, litter, uh, for the property at 3340 Redmond Avenue, and we have an amendment.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 33 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Carshere Lee, 3340 Redmond Avenue. Here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chair, we had, uh, we, you know, we've gone through the process and just to give, you know, just so they have a little bit of background, you had assumed that this had been straightened out and with a, with a previous council and a previous council member to find out later that that was not the case. Um, what we have, what, what I think we will support today is, uh, the elimination of the, the, the interest and the penalties that were placed on you. And you did have a question about one of the, one of the times that, that, uh, there was a discussion about whether they had really cut or not. And, you know, took all of that into consideration. And, you know, I believe today we will, we will support, um, paying $1,000 because the work was done. And we have to, you know, we have to adhere pretty much to, you know, what the law says. If the work was done, we have to do it. But since there was a question and since, um, there was a misunderstanding or a lack of understanding early on, uh, I think it, uh, just wanted to let you know that I'm, I'm going to move a floor amendment, uh, that you pay the $1,000. And you can pay that. I, I think you can get with the, uh, get with the appropriate people and, and determine how you can pay that or what, how you can make payments or whatever the case may be, if that's okay. All right? Uh, I'm gonna put the, uh, floor amendment to, uh, uh, adopt a $1,000 fine.
Eliminate the latter half of the amendment.
Yeah, which, yeah.
Yeah. There's an amendment. There's an amendment you have on your, uh, in front of...
Yes, I'll move the amendment.
Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett?
Yes, thank you.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended?
Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero.
The public hearings on Agenda Items Numbers 36 through 60 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the Agenda Item Number you wish to address. Identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
No, we'll do that in separate.
Do that separate. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
And now 87 is Resolution, the appointment of Tim Darby to be a member of the Visitors Advisory Board is hereby confirmed.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 87 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Now, Item Number 61 is Resolution that attached amendments to the Omaha Council plus fiscal year 2008, 11 and 12. Consolidated submission for community planning and development programs are hereby approved.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 61 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7, Agenda Items Number 62 through 63 shall be laid over three weeks for publication and public hearing. Ordinance on final reading, Item Number 64, Special Ordinance loving special tax and assessment on pieces of real estate in the Benson Business Improvement District, Number 68754. The year, calendar year, work done in the calendar year 2010, and we have an amendment.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number 64 was held on March 26, 2013. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
As amended?
Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Passed as amended, seven to zero. And now 65 is Special Ordinance loving special tax and assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within the Benson Improvement District, Number 6875, uh, for work done in the calendar year 2011. We have an amendment.
The, the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 65 was held on March 26, 2013. Roll call.
Festerson? Gurnett? Gray? Jerem? Stothard? Thompson? Mr. President?